We will now begin interviewing our county commissioner candidates. The county commissioner candidates with us this evening include Commissioner Matt Avery, Rusty Bell, Lyle Schmidt, Commissioner Mickey Schobert, and Mary E. Silvernell. Welcome candidates. We will begin with an introductory statement from each candidate. Candidates, you have one minute. We will start with Commissioner Matt Avery.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women's Voters for inviting me here tonight. And I was born in Sheridan, Wyoming, and my family moved to Campbell County when I was ten. Been a Campbell County resident ever since. Lifelong rancher. There's five generations of family on our ranch, or been five generations of family on our ranch. I'm blessed with a beautiful wife, forty, almost forty-one years, almost forty years as a volunteer firefighter, and for about three and a half years as a county commissioner.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to Rusty Bell.
Thank you for having me. I am a Campbell County native, born in Gillette in nineteen seventy-three. Graduated from CCHS, Campbell County High School, in nineteen ninety-two, and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree from Jamestown College in Jamestown, North Dakota, in nineteen ninety-seven. I currently own and operate one of the largest taxidermy shops in this area, and I have a nine and a twelve-year-old son that attend Prairie Wind Elementary School. And I want to be a part of keeping Campbell County prosperous. I have the time, the energy, the dedication to make good decisions for the Campbell County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Lyle Schmidt.
Hello. Thanks for inviting me here. I'm Lyle Schmidt, and I have a family here in Gillette. I have four girls. That would explain the color of my hair. During that time, I've been at the coal mine at Bel Air for thirty-five years. I have an engineering degree in civil engineer technician, where I worked at Bel Air for the first twenty-five years as an engineer, on the engineer staff. During that time, just living in Campbell County, and starting with the boom in seventy-nine, I wasn't born and raised here, but I know the, what the people grew up, because I came here with the same things that everybody else in seventy-nine, eighteen, eighty-one for jobs. And because of that, I'd kind of like to really get into representing the miners, as well as everybody else in the town. I'm not just a Republican, I'm a conservative, and I support all the ideas of the Tea Party. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Mickey Schobert. I'm running, or my second term as county commissioner. I'm a lifelong resident of Campbell County. My grandfather was born in Wyoming, about sixty miles from here, five years prior to Wyoming becoming a state. And so, we never got very far away from here. So, I'm a contractor. I've been a building contractor for thirty-plus years. I spent ten years on the Campbell County School Board, and I have four grown grandchildren and, thank you.
And now we move on to Mary E. Silvernell.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm currently serving as the Director for the Campbell County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and as such, report to a joint powers board were funded by the two percent lodging tax. So, in my role, it's important for me to understand the Wyoming municipal statutes for budgeting and financial review. I also have the opportunity to partner with the Town of Wright, the City of Gillette, and the Campbell County Commissioners and legislators in my role, to make sure that we're doing the right things to move Campbell County forward as far as visitor opportunities. I also believed in being a very involved citizen. And as such, I'm involved in a lot of things. I'm a member of the Care Board. I'm the treasurer for the Land Board. I am on the Air Service Enhancement Committee, and I am the President for the Republican Women and a Precinct Committee Woman, and a member of the Women in Business. I graduated from the GALLI, the Gillette Area Leadership Institute Program, and also from the Leadership Wyoming Program. My bachelor's degree is in organizational communication. I would like to use my experience and the things that I have learned and been involved with to serve you as your county commissioner.
Thank you. Now for the first question, which goes to all the candidates. Each candidate has one minute to respond. The question is, what is your position on the optional one percent tax? And this question will begin with Rusty Bell.
Thank you for the question. I am a big supporter of the optional one percent tax. The one percent tax benefits the citizens of Campbell County in a lot of ways that they don't even realize. And the things that we've done in Campbell County, and the way Campbell County people are, jobs bring people to Campbell County, but some of the things that keep people here are things that the one percent does. And so, I think that what I've been trying to do is educate people on what the one percent does, and make sure that they go out and support the one percent. It's something that we really need in Campbell County, and that we're really, that we would miss if it was gone. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lyle Schmidt.
Yes, I'm against the one percent. The one percent originally started as a temporary solution to cover some expenses, and even though over the years, the one percent of them has been spent well, and it's been spent throughout the community in an equal manner and everything else. But it's still the taxpayers' money. And even though I'm against it, if the taxpayers of the Campbell County voted back in, not only I would support it, I'll do my best to try to spend the money wisely and efficiently. Now, like I said, don't keep in mind that I've never met a tax that shouldn't outlive its usefulness. And this is one of them. I think it should go away, and we should save it for when we have a special project or need it again. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that same question goes to Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
Prior to my election coming to the commissioner's office, the county made a conscious decision to, they had an opportunity to make the one percent a forever tax, and they made a decision to put it up to the voters, and we've wanted that decision since. Campbell County, we listen to what the people tell us that they want to spend on. For example, we use it at the library, we use it at the senior center, we use it for law enforcement vehicles, we use it for fire department vehicles, we use it for some street maintenance, or road maintenance. We do quite a bit with the social service organizations, such as the S House, Garf, Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to Mary E. Silvernell.
Yes, I am also a supporter of the one percent tax. I believe that if it is something that the voters can vote on every four years, that it is something that we could move forward with, and it is a very, very good resource for making sure that projects that we may not be able to budget for in the, with the regular operating funds, that we can get things done with that tax, as long as the voters vote that tax in. And they have been doing that since nineteen seventy-six. So, it is a long time that the supporters here in Campbell County have utilized that resource. I think we can do a better job possibly of communicating all the projects that we've been able to complete as a result of that one percent tax, and continue to poll our voters, so that we can know what it is that they would like to see us to do with that tax.
Thank you. And that same question moves on to Commissioner Matt Avery.
Thank you. I'm a strong supporter of the one percent sales tax. My opinion, it's the most fair tax that we have. Everybody pays it, even the illegal immigrants pay it when they buy a taco or whatever else they need to buy. But it does a lot of good, as Rusty Bell and Mickey Schobert mentioned. It does so much in this county, and a lot of people are not aware of what it does. And I feel that the tax is spent very wisely, and in projects that it does. And so, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our next question, excuse me, our next question will go to Lyle Schmidt. You have one minute to respond. Mr. Schmidt, when asked about social services funding, you said that some outside agencies have their own interest in mind, not the people of Campbell County. What agencies are you referring to?
Well, that's interesting. There are so many agencies from, the biggest one is the EPA. They always have their interest on global warming, and we're basically an energy producer, and one of the biggest county producers in coal in the United States. But there's other ones that get involved in there. They interfere with the airport, the tobacco arms, and their social services. You have the neck of the woods where they're telling you what to do with your kids, and so on. The Department of Education, even though no left, child left behind started out to be a good thing to pick up on, the less fortunate kids in the class, it turned out to be a way to slow down the top people of the class. So, anytime when you have an outside agency dictating here, and most of the outside agencies come from Washington, and they're large liberal groups. Here in Wyoming, we're conservative, Republican, and we should be left alone. Thank you.
We will now give the other candidates thirty seconds for rebuttal. I'm going to actually repeat this question, because I think there was some misunderstanding there in the answer.
I was going to ask you to do.
When asked about social services funding, you said that some outside agencies have their own interest in mind, not the people of Campbell County. And we'll start with Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
To me, social service agencies are the S House, the Boys and Girls Club, the Garf, Second Chance Ministries. I don't feel like that they have outside interest. I mean, they take maybe some clients that come from outside Campbell County, but the money is spent here and used here, and it's used very wisely. And also, the county uses the Care Board, and the Care Board oversees those social service agencies for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary E. Silvernell.
Thank you. As a member of the Care Board, I agree with Mickey. I believe that it is quite the process that we go through to learn from the agencies, who their clients are, and what their needs are, and how they're trying to meet those needs. So, I don't believe that the social service agencies have an outside agenda. I think that there are a lot of needy people in Campbell County, and I believe it's important that we continue to support the social service agencies.
Commissioner Matt Avery.
I thank you. I agree with Mary and Mick that the social services in Campbell County don't have an outside interest. And what they do here in Campbell County for our residents is spectacular. And I invite anybody to go visit the S House or Garf, and we rely heavily on Care Board to help us make decisions on, for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Rusty Bell.
Thank you. I'd have to agree with the prior four candidates, that I've been, over the last month, able to go and visit some of these places, and it's wonderful the things they do. I certainly think they have the Campbell County citizens in mind in everything that they do. And so, I would be a supporter of that. And I've spoken to a lot of citizens that really appreciate the things that they do. Many of these services cannot get grants, federal grants, if they don't show some sort of local support from the local governments. Thank you.
The next question is for Commissioner Mickey Schobert. You have one minute to respond. Mr. Schobert, or Commissioner Schobert, in your questionnaire, you talk about reducing budgets. How do you propose providing quality services while the county is growing and holding the department's budgets?
Right now, the budget came to us, and it was twenty to thirty million dollars over what the available funding was. Through the budget process that we go through as commissioners, we reduced that down. We also, at the same time that we reduced that, we set money aside for some future projects. We funded our reserve accounts as we anticipated to do that. But I would tell you that we've done some things with the landfill that has reduced the cost of the landfill. We're in a process of a study now that has the potential to save thirty million dollars in the cost of a new transfer station, has the ability to change the landfill life from twenty years to forty years, which is, in essence, is doubling the life of the landfill. It also has good chance of reducing the tipping fees at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have rebuttal from the other candidates. Thirty seconds, please. Mary Silvernell.
Yes, I would approach the budget for the county from a business perspective. My experience is in zero-based budgeting, meaning every year we started from nothing and then built the budget up. And by doing that, I think you have the opportunity to really analyze and look at each department and at each need. So, for me, it would be taking a look at everything that we do individually, and analyzing that as if you would for a normal business or your own company.
Thank you. Commissioner Matt Avery.
We spend probably three, four days of twelve-hour days going through the budget. And anyhow, our departments work very hard to make these budgets up and send them into us, and then we go through line item by line item to bring that budget down to the amount of revenue that we have to work with. And I agree with Mick, we put money aside for future capital and maintenance and fleet. Thank you.
Rusty Bell.
Thank you. I think all in all, the budgets, from talking to the departments over the last few months, have been very good. I think the department heads appreciate the budget work that the commissioners have done, and that's something that I would rely on, is those department heads to inform me on what's going on in their department with growth, and with where they need more, and where they don't need more, and we can work together to work that out. I'm not here to look at every tiny little thing they have. I would rather have them inform me on how their department's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle Schmidt.
I have to agree with Mary on this one. I think, starting from ground zero and building up a budget, and building up a budget is similar to what you do at home. You never can spend more than you take in, but you also, budgeting is a yearly thing. You can fine-tune that budget throughout the entire year until you get to the end of the date. So, I think that's what you should do, start from scratch and fine-tune it throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be for Mary E. Silvernell. You will have one minute to answer. You mentioned that this is a time for frugal spending and to scrutinize, quote, "wanted" projects. Which projects do you have in mind?
Thank you. I would have to say that this last year, from a personal perspective in my business job, is, was taking a look at the Gillette Visitor Center and a new location. And as we went through that whole process, I realized, in looking at all the other needs that we have in the community, that at this particular time, perhaps, we could wait on a new Gillette Visitor Center location by looking at all the other needs we have. That would be one example. I think we have to take a look at the county as a whole, look at the big picture, and determine what the needs are. And based on what those needs are, then we can look at, okay, what are the next things in line, so to speak? So, I think personally, I've learned this year that in this sort of a position, those are the kinds of decisions and things you have to look at and think about when making those budget decisions.
Thank you. We will now give the other candidates thirty seconds for rebuttal, and we'll begin with Commissioner Matt Avery.
Thank you. We spend every year going through and prioritizing what projects are the most important, what are the needs of our county. First of all, our infrastructure is the most important thing, fire department, and emergency services, and water, and roads. And those are the things that we focus on primarily the most, and then we fit in everything else after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rusty Bell.
Thank you. I'd have to agree, this is a team effort, and there's other county commissioners that you're going to have to sit down with, visit with, what the growth is going to be in our county, and see what we're going to need to make that work, whether it's infrastructure, roads, like Matt said. And then you go to the other departments. Thank you.
Lyle Schmidt.
As an engineering technician there, we've done a lot of work on roads and asphalt and structures. And I have to agree that keeping the roads up and the fire department stuff, because them are stuff that all the taxpayers would pay for, whether they were taxed or not. So, when you start with that type of base, you can't go wrong there. And then you should move into some of the social stuff. Like, I really like to develop on the children's center. That's a really good cause. Thank you.
Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
Thank you. I would like to start with, commissioners are, can levy up to twelve mils for their budget. Campbell County is the only county in the state of Wyoming that does not levy the full twelve mils. We levy eleven point zero one five mils. Campbell County, we do not do anything unless we have the case. They're ready, available to pay for the project when it's let for bids. Campbell County has had one debt in a hundred-plus years, and that was in nineteen seventy to build a new courthouse. And since then, Campbell County has been debt-free. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will be for Commissioner Matt Avery. You have one minute to respond. You mentioned, quote, "more and more agencies starting up and wanting money to help support their programs, and it makes it real hard on how much the county can keep giving," unquote. How do you plan to evaluate which agencies get support?
Well, thank you for that question. We rely primarily on the Care Board, which is made up of several people, and they are very qualified in looking at the needs of these services. And so, as these new ones come on, we have to also look at, you know, the funding, how much funding we have to help support them. Also, some of the social services, as costs rise, they ask for more money each year. And sometimes we up that a little bit, maybe not their full amount that they requested, but we do support them. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. Rusty Bell.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it is important that we take a look at those, use the Care Board, like Matt said, and so use the advice that they give on those new agencies coming in. We are a very generous community. Campbell County's always been generous. That's why people like it here. And we've done a lot of things for people to keep them here. But that being said, we have to be careful on what we're doing, and make sure that we're using the citizens' money responsibly.
Commissioner Mickey Schobert. I'm sorry. Lyle Schmidt.
The.
I knew I was going to miss somebody sometime tonight.
That's right. The need of the county and the need of the taxpayers usually dictates where the agencies and which agencies should get funded at full capacity or less. It's based on a lot of stuff that's happening in the community at that time. There's no year-to-year fix for everything. It's going to have to be budgeted, because each, the community changes all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
I think that there's probably always going to be more needs than there's money to provide for that. But in the S House, their final project, we offered to match dollar-for-dollar the money that they raised, and basically, that doubled the amount of money that they had available for their project. And so, we're probably going to use that tactic in some of the other things in the future that, and we're always going to take a hard look at social services and do the best we can with those, with the money we have available.
And Mary Silvernell.
Yes, I would agree. As a Care Board member, please note that we do complete assessments every year. We do agency liaison assignments, so that we can look inside each agency and see how they're performing, and see what the need is, and how they fill that need. There never will be enough money for all the need out there, but do know that we do those assessments and update those every year, so that we feel like we are addressing the most important needs that are happening for that next year, and make those recommendations for funding, and then go from there.
Thank you. Our next question is for Rusty Bell. You will have one minute to respond. In your questionnaire, you said you plan on, quote, "standing up for Campbell County against EPA, BLM, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and other government agencies with agendas that are driving down our mineral industries," unquote. How do you plan on doing this?
Thank you for the question. I think that it's going to be a joint effort between not only the county commissioners, but also with our state representatives, senators, and representatives, and then also probably with the governor's office. We have a lot of infringement from some of these, some of these federal agencies, and I think it's time that the commissioners start, and I think it's already started. They've done a good job here recently, and I'm going to go ahead and continue that. But it's going to be a joint effort with our state officials and probably even our federal officials, Senator Anzian Barasso and Lumis. Thank you.
We will now give the other candidates thirty seconds for rebuttal, and we'll start with Lyle Schmidt.
Well, I'm not exactly sure how much we can do on some of the stuff from EPA, but I'd like to join in that effort to do it, so that the, so we can pass something that we can get a handle on sulfur emissions and mercury, stuff like that, and our coal and our production of natural gas and so on. And I don't know if we can really get a handle from this position, but I'd like to meet with our representatives and our senators and make sure that we're protected.
Commissioner Mickey Schobert.
Thank you. We already do a lot of that. It's, I probably spent a week and a half this month in regards to working with governments at the higher level. I was in Riverton variety to testify in front of the Natural Resource Committee about a conversation and a plan that Campbell County and Johnson County has to deal with the raptors and the infringements on the oil and gas permitting in southern Campbell County. And we surprisingly have made some big progress with it.
Thank you. Mary Silvernell.
We may be less in number in the state of Wyoming than in other states, but we are mighty in our resolve, and I believe that it is necessary and important that we do team up together and do what we can as a partner with business and industry that we have locally here, as well as our legislative representatives and our federal representatives, to do as much as we possibly can, and just keep trying and keep trying, and don't give up.
Commissioner Matt Avery.
We work real hard every year at a local level, and state level, the WCCA. And I'm really involved locally, statewide, and nationally with the National Association of Counties, where I sit on an Ag and Rural Affairs Steering Committee. And we go and visit with Department of Ag, Department of Interior, Anzian, Barasso, and Lumis. And it's my philosophy, to get anything done, we've got to start at the top and work down. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to closing remarks. Candidates, you have up to one minute for closing remarks, or to address any topics that were not covered in the questioning period. And we'll begin with Commissioner Schobert.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here. One thing that we missed touching on was, two years ago, when we did the second phase of Northern Drive, we had instituted the shingle recycle program that shredded shingles at an asphalt plant. They were having trouble getting rid of their product. EPA wouldn't allow them to store over a certain amount. We went, sat down, went through, did a design, used fifteen percent recycled asphalt and shingles in the second phase of Northern Drive. It saved the taxpayers twenty thousand dollars in tipping fees at the landfill. It saved considerable amount of money in the asphalt paving site of it, and we happen to be number-one project in the state of Wyoming. It's never been done anywhere else, and we're, the company here holds shingle recycle permit number-one from DEQ, and I think that is a pretty great accomplishment.
Thank you. Mary Silvernell.
Thank you. I believe the role of a county commissioner is to look at the big picture for the county and to understand what the needs are from its residents. I believe that with a communication that is an open-door policy, we can learn what those issues are. And it would be my strength that I would do as much research as I possibly could to learn as much about the issue, and talk to as many people as possible, so that we're making good decisions moving forward. I am used to having a business environment. I would appreciate that sort of discussion and teamwork, and looking at the staff, and using everyone in their best capacity, and having that as the opportunity to continue to move the county forward. We do a great job already, and I think if we have the opportunity, if I have the opportunity, I would love to serve as your county commissioner on August nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Matt Avery.
I want to thank, again, the League of Women's Voters for having us here tonight. You know, it's been an interesting time, three and a half years as a county commissioner. I've learned a lot. It takes a lot of time. I'm dedicated to it, and I believe, being a county commissioner, it takes in all four sides of the county, city of Gillette, Town of Wright, and you need to make yourself available to all the county, and which I do. And anyhow. And, uh, anyhow, and I, I believe that it's really important that we work hard, uh, to push back on the EPA and, and the Endangered Species Act that's crippling our county and our state for coal and oil exploration. And so that is my, my, uh, uh, work ahead, not only to, uh, serve the lifestyle that we live today, but also our children's lifestyle and the lifestyle of our grandchildren, and that's my, thank you.
Thank you. Rusty Bell.
Well, again, thank you for having me. Um, running a, for an elected office is certainly an interesting pro, uh, process. Everything you do is about yourself, and you have parties for yourself, and you have signs that have your name on it, and the job is not about me. Uh, the job is about the people of Campbell County. And so I have been humbled with the support that people have given me, and I really appreciate it, and, uh, I just want everybody to know that, um, if you elect me, I will, I have the time and I have the dedication, and I will work really hard for the people of Campbell County to keep Campbell County the best, really the best place to live and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lyle Schmidt.
Yes, I, I also believe that the, uh, the, the strength of this county comes from the people, and sometimes to slow down and, and get input from the entire county, Wright included, on some ideas, how to use some properties and how to, to spend some money wisely. If, if, if you take the time to ask the people that you've been around, the same, the same people you've been around your whole life to raise a family here, you'll find that there's a lot more ideas than what five people could come up with. And I'd like to, uh, make sure that I'm around for all the people in Campbell County to make sure they can give me their ideas, and I will take them seriously. And also because I, I am, uh, have, uh, engineering, I, I, I know that we can do some better planning, just like, uh, Mr. Schobert said, that we can, we can continue to cut costs on base material and stuff like that as well. And thank you inviting me. Thank you.
Thank you.